The Board will now come to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. You have 20 present, Mr. President. You have a quorum.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Norman Owens of Rema, of the Rema Church. I am so honored to have Pastor Owens join us today to help kick off this meeting. And we also have with us First Lady Owens. Let's give her a big round of applause and thank her for coming out today.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'm honored to be here among you and I appreciate this invitation. Before we have a word of prayer, brief word of prayer, let's just observe 30 seconds silence as we remember certainly the son of Ronnie Robinson, who of course is the cousin of President Reed. Ron's son, Breon Jamal Robinson, was 29 when he was cut down, life cut short in Spanish Lake, January 26th. And so let's have a 30 seconds of silence, please. Thank you so much. If you would just close your eyes as we have a brief word of prayer. Eternal and omnipotent God, Thou who art, oh our Creator, we thank you right now. We do come to you because we know that everything you do is done well. Because of your omnipotence, we now appeal to you to guide us in all of our undertakings. We pray now for the President and these who serve the people of this city. We thank you so much, Lord, that you have made sure that so many honor their office and the position more than the office and the position honors them. We thank you for people with character like that. We do ask now that in our propensity to do what is right and pleasing in your sight, that our leanings again would be not as much to the left or to the right, but more so to the right than the wrong. We do also affirm in this place, we really do affirm in this place, dear Lord, that what will be done this day and hereafter, all of the proceedings, would be productive, peaceful, and certainly that which pleases you. And so now we thank you again. It is because of you that we're here now, because I got to know you through one person, and that is Christ. I now ask that these things be done in that name. Again, we pray as well that you would lead and guide us, cause our character to be catapulted to the place where we're reaching our highest self, that we may do your best work. One last thing we do ask, we do ask of you, Lord, and that is that we become selfless to the point where we are looking not at our ulterior motives, but we're looking at that which is pleasing again in your sight, that which uplifts people every level, every demographic group, even those of the marginal crowd. We thank you now. In that name we pray.
So wanna, you know, let's give Pastor Owens a big round of applause for that. So my cousin Ronnie, I just wanna tell him, you know, we're still looking for justice for Breon. They still have not found the people who have murdered him. We're gonna be working each and every day to make sure that we get some justice for Breon. So let's give Ronnie a big round of applause and thank him for staying out there, working on behalf of his son and getting some justice.[428.12][428.12](Applause). Alderman from the 14th, introduction of our guest.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'm sorry for your loss. As we move forward, I'd like to introduce.
We have some order.
For my honored guests, Jeff Hans, Keith Taylor's from the Carpenter's District Council, Demetrius Alfred from Local 73, and last but not least, Lou Hamilton from Centrix.[456.71][456.71](Applause).
Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest Alex Scharf from the Builders in the Summit. There he is over there. Greg Meyer, Tilly's Park Neighbor Association. I also wanted to have as my special guest Jeff Hans, who was gracious enough to hold back his questions the other day during the meeting. He represents a lot of the employees of the city, and he understood that at that point, you know, bringing things on would have made things worse. But I wanted to publicly acknowledge him for working for the employees of the city of St. Louis.
All right, thank you. Alderman, Alderman from the 22nd.
I know that.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have my special guest, Mr. Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T. Thank you.[516.91][516.91](Applause).
Alderman from the 12th.
President, members of the Board, I'd like to introduce Jeff Abusi with the Operating Engineers. I'd also like to introduce Demetrius Alfred from Local 73, and Sterling from Farmer By State member.[539.48][539.48](Applause).
Alderwoman from the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome our guests, Mavis Thompson with the License Collector's Office, and Frederick Cersey Plumbing and Pipe Fitters.[554.29][554.29](Applause).
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Approval of the minutes. Mr. Clerk.
We have the minutes from April 27th, 2018.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for approval of the April 27th.
Move right on from the 18th, second about all from 10th, any discussion? Alderman favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 10th. Does Alderman from the 10th want to wrap? Yeah. We're waiting for you to get your paperwork together, Alderman.
I don't do any rap.
Okay. Go ahead.[613.16][613.16](Laughter). Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we're gathered here on this fourth day of May, which in 1715, the first folding umbrella was invented, which might come in handy later today. In 1959, speaking of rap, the first Grammy Awards were given out. Perry Coma and Ella Fitzgerald topped it back then. And, but most importantly, this is Star Wars Day. May the fourth be with you.
Be with you.
Yes. Like to thank the Alderman from the 23rd for dressing up as Yoda today. Thank you.[647.04][647.04](Laughter).
All right. Reporter city officials.
We have report of city officials, report of the clerk of the Board of Aldermen. We have none from the office of the mayor. We have the following. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Lofteboro Commons Community Improvement District. The appointment of Ms. West, Ms. Melissa Setzer, who represents a property owner in the 11th Ward and whose term will expire on May 19th, 2019.
Alderman from the 11th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to Lofteboro Commons Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve Melissa Setzer to the Lofteboro Commons Community Improvement.
Move by Alderman from the 11th, second by Alderman from the 25th, any discussion? Alderman favor signified by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Board of Adjustment. The reappointment of Ms. Mona Parsley, who resides in the 7th Ward and whose term will expire on August 15th, 2022. The reappointment of Mr. Joseph Clitzing, who resides in the 15th Ward and whose term will expire on August 15th, 2021. The reappointment of Mr. George Hitt, who resides in the 28th Ward and whose term will expire on August 15th, 2021.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve to the reappoint, move that Mona Parsley, Joseph Clitzing, and George Hitt are reappointed to the Board of Adjustment.
Move by Alderman from the 28th, entertain a second. Second by Alderman from the 25th, Alderman from the first.
I ask for a roll call, and I stand to object, to oppose all three of these reappointments for a variety of reasons. First of all, if you look at the appointments, they in no way reflect what the city looks like. And there are no appointments from North St. Louis, and I think that is a shame, and it's a continuation from the same old ignorance of the prior administration. And I specifically am opposed to these people because the things that are going on in North St. Louis with the downzoning, the gas stations, all the things that they've done. There's a gas station at the corner of St. Louis Avenue and Kings Highway that they okayed over our, over our own board bill, which had specifically prohibited that, prohibited that. And they went ahead and okayed it anyway. They're political, they don't have any concern for where I live. The citizens came down there and protested and testified against it. When we left the hearing, the zoning official said that was the best presentation we have ever heard, and you guys knocked it out of the park. But because of one of the dishonest city councilors that we have here that also needs to go, and because of these people who absolutely have no concern about what goes on in North St. Louis, don't care that people are serving old food. There's something going on Facebook right now about old food at these stores that got all the lights and all the signage and all the cigarette and all the liquor. This is all that they're promoting in North St. Louis. And these are the people okaying it even over our own board bills. They think they're more important than the Board of Aldermen, and that is ridiculous, okay? And they're, I saw today, when I got up, I saw somebody getting locked up into one of the stores where the owner would not let them out because they had discovered that there was old food there. And this right at the corner of Cabbany and Kings Highway. I actually had asked for, in my ward, I had the health department go out into every one of these kind of shady establishments and came back with all kinds of things. And then Tom Walterman sent a letter out to people telling them, no longer do anything that I asked for because I got actual documented proof of what was going on with these things. But here the Board of Adjustment is okaying these things. We bring proof about crime and activity, and what happens is they keep pushing it in North St. Louis. I have talked to untold number of North St. Louis Aldermen that are new, that are saying, why is this in our community? But soon as you cross over Delmar, they don't let that happen. It is because you put people on these boards who don't give a damn about North St. Louis, and they keep downgrading our community and then telling us, this is who we are. This is not who we are. In fact, the people who are doing all this stuff don't live in our community. And these people have no business being reappointed, and the mayor, all not to be tone deaf, or somebody should be saying, hey, do you see, there's nobody from North St. Louis being appointed to this right here. She ought to reconsider, and I would really ask that we send these, we used to send these people to a committee to be heard and challenged and questioned about what they're doing. Now we stand on this floor and we pass them through like it's some kind of speed demon that has to be. It does not, because whether they get reappointed today or not, they still are on that board. But we need to question it. And Tom Villa came to me from the former Alderman from the 11th, and he said to me how he was so shocked at the things, one day we were at a hearing, how they were so strict with him about things, even things that he supported. They said no in the 11th Ward and pushed it in the first ward. What kind of city do we live in? When you have cancer in one part of the city, you have cancer in all parts of the city. And you cannot keep disrespecting my community and expect me not to call you out. These are three people that have no business on being reappointed, and why are not there any, are any of these people black? Do any of these people live in North St. Louis? What happened to the inclusion that the mayor, who got 32% of the vote, talked about doing? 68, 60 some percent of the people voted for black people to be the mayor of the city of St. Louis. So, Ms. Leiterkruczen, mayor of the city of St. Louis, you need to do something better than continuing what the mayor from the 11th, who started out in the 23rd Ward, the former mayor Francis Lay is doing. This is ridiculous. I oppose it. For all of those who have come to me and say, why do we have all these liquor stores in our community? Why do we have all these gas stations? These people are the reason why, because they don't care what happens in North St.
Alderman from the 11th, take a pass. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 25th.
All right. Well, I don't, I certainly appreciate the, my colleague from the first ward's comments. I too have struggled greatly with zoning issues and, you know, challenges to variances and things of that nature in my ward, and certainly would love to see more diversity and inclusion on our commissions and boards as a city as a whole. And I do believe that, you know, I would like to have more discussion with regard to that as well. I would like to remove my second of this, and I ask the sponsor to move this to the Legislative Committee.
Yeah. Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I was just gonna ask if the sponsor would yield.
Alderman from the 28th, will you yield for question until Alderman from the 22nd?
Yes, I will.
Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Alderman, would you mind referring these appointments to committee?
I do not have a problem referring this to committee. I would just like to respond that I do know George Hitt is an African American who, in terms of a concern about inclusiveness, and I don't know if we would want, if, I'm happy to refer this to committee. My question is, do we want to refer all three of these, or is, is that the request for all three? The whole, the entire thing goes to committee?
Yes.
It would have to be all three, but here's my thought, is that from talking to some of my colleagues for many years, being down here, it's not clear what your letter of support really gets you to the Board of Adjustment. I mean, there are certain laws that they have to govern themselves by, and I think this would be a good opportunity for us to be educated on how it truly works at the Board of Adjustment, you know, notwithstanding any other issues.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 28th, you're gonna withdraw your motion to adopt, and would you like to make a motion that it be sent to committee?
Yes, I withdraw my motion to approve these reappointments and.
Would you like to make a motion to send to HUDs?
And move that, to send this to, to the HUDs Committee.
All right. It's been, it's been moved by Alderman from 28th that we refer the mayor's appointments to the Board of Adjustments, to HUDs. Alderman from 25th, would you like to second that motion?
Aye.
All right. And Alderman from 25th, second the motion. Alderman from 25th, you, Alderman from the 18th, you had some questions?
I do.
Alderman from the 18th and Alderman from the 17th.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is the Board of Adjustment up under the zoning office? Okay.
Yeah. Would you, why?
I just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
Because it may have needed to come to public safety as opposed to housing.
I don't, I don't know that the, if you and the chairman from the 17th could have a discussion, I'm sure the sponsor would be okay with sending it. Would you like to send it to public safety?
With this going anywhere, if it was gonna come to HUDs, I was gonna ask that someone kind of clearly enunciate the intent of the hearing, that they want to hear from the people coming down to interview them on the merits of their qualifications to serve, or was the interest to have a better understanding of how the Board works, which is what I believe the Alderman from the 22nd had asked.
Okay. First, we're gonna hear from Alderman from the 25th, then we're, Alderman from the 25th. Yes, I think we, I think we may, yes, yes. So we will, Alderman from the 28th, you would like to amend your motion to send it to public safety? Withdraw your second. Can we do this? Can you all have a conversation real quick while I go to the Alderman from the 25th, and then Alderman from the first, so we know? Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I hope that my comments at this moment, hopefully will clarify the Alderman from the 17th question. My, my personal reason for wanting to send this to committee for refer, you know, I, I've been down here for, you know, over nine years now, and it's very frustrating at times when we have these citywide commissions and boards, and, you know, we basically act as a rubber stamp oftentimes. And, you know, even underneath the previous administration, I was frustrated that we didn't have a more hands-on approach. You know, often, you know, I myself have been very active in trying to get particularly young people more engaged in city government, and our boards and commission are one way that we can go ahead and do that. And, you know, I've been very active in trying to send referrals over to the administrations to, you know, have folks sit on these boards. But I do think that it's incumbent upon us, you know, we're not just here to, you know, consent on these, but advise and consent. And part of that is, you know, when, when these folks, particularly on the citywide commissions, you know, come to us, you know, I think it's incumbent upon us as a legislative body to, you know, review, you know, not only the qualifications of the individuals that are being nominated, but allowing our colleagues the opportunity to air any grievances or concerns that they might have with regard to those appointments, so that we have a full picture when we are, you know, moving things forward. You know, and secondary to that, I do think that this Board, in particular, the Board of Adjustments, touches every single ward on a very regular basis with regard to, you know, zoning and planning and nuisance activity in some cases. And so I do think while, while I've had a good working relationship with the Board of Adjustments, you know, it has at times been a frustrating process and a lengthy process, which I understand is, you know, partly due to legal issues as well. But I think it's important for us to also educate members of this body on what each of these boards is responsible for doing. So I think it's twofold. You know, one is to be able to, you know, especially since roughly half of this body is very new and still, you know, learning various parts of city government, you know, for them to be able to have the opportunity to learn more about the various commissions and boards that, you know, represent the city, but also provide an opportunity for this body to, you know, basically vet nominations coming through. I don't expect this to be on every single board and commission in the city, but, you know, certainly those that are citywide, I think we should take a more careful look at.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the first.
I wanted to answer the Alderwoman from the 28th when she said that the member from the 28th is black. Let me just explain to you, I've lived in the central quarter, I've lived in South St. Louis, and I've lived in North St. Louis. So, I would prefer to have a white person represent me that lived in North St. Louis who knew what was going on than a black person that's in your community. And I can tell you the difference. When I lived in South St. Louis, I wasn't so concerned about what happened in North St. Louis, because I didn't live there. I was somewhat, because my in-laws lived there. When I lived in the central quarter, I didn't know much about what was going on, because I lived on Waterman, 50 under block. I didn't know what was going on in South St. Louis and North St. Louis. So where you tend to live, you give a little bit more thought to what happens there. And so I have heard the thoughtless things that these people have said about, well, it's gotta be someplace. Really? Well, put it right by your house. That is really what I say all the time to people who bring nuisance kind of activities or attractive nuisances to me. They always want to put it in North St. Louis. And then I say, where do you live? And they say, oh, I live in Normandy. Why don't you put it in Normandy? Well, they won't let me. Oh, I live in wherever. They won't let you, but you think it's okay. The press and a lot of people think anything is okay in North St. Louis. So I understand zoning. My husband was a city planner, that's what one of his degrees is in. I actually took planning from one of the master planners. People wrote, wrote the book, Daniel Mandaker, when I was at Wash U. So I understand how zoning and downzoning can hurt communities, and that's what they've been doing to my community. And they have no business representing it, and they don't even understand it, and it's not impacting them. It's the same thing I feel about the police and everything else. The other thing is, we actually have several laws on the book that are not being followed. One of them is that these boards and commission are supposed to be reflective of the entire city, not a few parts of the city, okay? The other one is, and Robert Rejerry passed this, who was the 24th Ward Alderman years ago, because they were doing stuff to the 24th Ward, they're supposed to be giving us a report. They never give us a report. I'm not seeing one since I've been down here. So we don't know, long as the individual Alderperson is being taken care of, and I will say, your ward will be taken care of, either way. But the other wards that don't want this stuff and have put laws into effect, our laws ought to be followed, and I don't care if he's black, orange, and green from the 28th Ward, he doesn't live in North St. Louis, okay? And so besides race, I do want race, I also want region and areas to be represented. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Alderman from the 6th.
Colleagues, I just wanted to make a quick statement that we did refer recently a set of appointees from the mayor's office to committee, and I would encourage if we, if we do this today, that my colleagues do formulate questions. When we referred the last resolution to committee, the Alderman from the 24th and I were the only ones to ask questions, even though many people on the floor rose in support of the fact we should be a little bit more thoughtful and deliberative about appointees. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
I actually have a question of the Alderwoman of the first.
Alderwoman of the first, will you yield questioning to the Alderman of the 23rd?
Yes, sir.
And this is, this is.
Yes, Mr. President, I will. I'm sorry.
Please, please proceed, Alderman.
This is more, and anyone else can also chime in, but if, and I know you know a lot of the rules, so that's why I'm asking. Maybe we need to do a resolution changing our system so that from now on, just like a board bill, every one of these things are assigned to a committee. And if that's the case, then this week, why don't we work on a resolution? This way, we're not offending anybody, that every resolution, we could pick what committee that would go to, and then, I just want to make sure that that's how we would work it in the rules, that we would change our rules to change that.
Did you want me to respond?
Yeah, I kind of want to know, because I, you know more than I do on that.
I actually like that. As I said before, in my prior life, most, a lot of these did get sent to committee, and especially if the committee where it was supposed to go, if the chair got up and opposed it at all, it would be sent to committee, okay? Since I've been back here, everything has just been rubber stamped, and so to me, we're not advising consent, and if we're not even gonna ask the people what they've done, look at what their record is, then we might as well just let the mayor appoint without any advising consent from us, okay? So I agree with you, we can do a resolution, we can do a rule, I, I will.
Well, would it take a resolution to do the rule change? If that's the case, I'd like to try and put something together this week, so that next Friday, we would introduce that. Or is it something we just poll the members? I don't know how, and again, I defer to you because you know more. Is there a simpler way than a resolution to change the rules?
We could do a resolution, and don't defer to me, we are all equals down here. I mean, so I would work with you, I would be glad to do that. I think that all of them should go to committees and that people should have a chance to ask questions. Now, the Alderwoman from the 6th is exactly right. When she sent something to committee, people didn't come. I assure you, I will come for this one, because I've been telling them, I'm gonna be waiting for when you come. for when you come, because you're going to have to explain to me how you overrule a board bill that specifically says you can't do this. I want you to answer this, and I told them, and in fact, I passed a resolution that, maybe I'll start back up to hearing, about subpoenaing these very people, because it is an abomination that you see so much things going on in certain communities that after a while, people think that that's what we want, when in fact, the alderpeople who represent that ward want exactly the opposite, as do the people, okay? And that's the way zoning is so important, and so a lot of these other boards and commission. In fact, I want to tell you, I actually have a list of all the boards and commissions in the city that the mayor appoints, and I was just having my secretary work on them, because as part of the new Chair of Public Employees, I'm going to share all that stuff with you. That's the stuff that we ought to know, and then we ought to be able to ask questions of whoever is doing it, so I would be happy to work with you this week to get that done, all right?
All right, all right, thank you. Anything further, Alderman? All right, all right, thank you. Alderman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just have a few comments. We are hasty to address things without doing our due diligence, and so for me, if we're going to do this, let's have a committee process where we can have a lot of input. There are more things to that than just who gets appointed, and we need to address all of it, if that's what you want to do. If you want to make it right, address all of it. Address the fact that there's no planning, because you see, if somebody on the Board of Adjustment has all the pertinent information about what your community has said they want and/or your directions, then we wouldn't get, we wouldn't have all those refilings that people have to do, and then we don't, I always have to go and fight for my stuff in person, because they deny. There are a lot of things, if you're going to look at something, look at all of it, and let's get it right, okay? It's not just about the appointments. Also, the other part to that too is, as a body, if we're going to work together, let's take care of everybody's issues. I know Dutch Town has some of the same issues that Jeff Vanderloo has, and so we got to work together on this and not jump out there too fast. And I shouldn't say this, I know I'm going to get in trouble about it, but we need to have some term limits on these folks. Some of them have been sitting on the same commission twenty-five to thirty years. N-O spells no, okay? So look at the whole picture, not just part, take your time, get it right. You don't need to do something in seven days, it's been like that for a hundred years, so if you're going to change it, change everything, but don't do stuff hastily. That's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Further discussion? I'm also going to ask that the Alderman from the twenty-eighth amend her motion and send it to public safety, I think that that would be cleaner. Alderman, you would like to keep it, everybody wants, all right, Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
I just have one last comment, you know, kind of sparked by my colleague from the nineteenth, and she and I have had this conversation many times, you know, as this, and it pertains to this, because, you know, we also have, you know, she mentioned planning, you know, the Board of Adjustments deals a lot with zoning, and zoning is directed by our planning department, and our planning department is woefully understaffed, and as we continue to head into our budget, you know, deliberations, I would hope that we continue to look at our planning department, because our planning department really does drive a huge amount of activity, you know, that happens here in the city of St. Louis, and to that extent also, we have three or four vacancies on the planning commission at this very moment. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, it all kind of fits into this greater picture that the alderwoman from the nineteenth ward was saying, that we really do need to take a comprehensive look at this, but I appreciate the alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, you know, making the motion to continue to move this to HUDs, and I don't know if that was the motion that's still standing.
That's still standing.
So do I need to second that again, because I think I removed my second?
It, it's, you already seconded.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we assign the mayor's appointments to the Board of Adjustments, to HUDs for hearings. All in favor, six, oh, there's been a request for roll call. Alderman from first, are you still requesting a roll call on sending it to committee? It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we send the mayor's appointments to the Board of Adjustments, to HUDs, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Clerk, please assign the mayor's appointments, board adjustments to HUDs Committee.
So noted. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appoint, for appointment to the Affordable Housing Board. The appointment of Mr. Mark Hirschman, who resides in the seventeenth ward and whose term will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. I respectfully request your approval for the appointment.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to Affordable Housing Board?
Mr. President, I don't know if I should make a motion or duck at this point.
You can assign it to HUDs, okay?
I, I, if there's a preference by anyone to send this to, I presume HUDs, I will yield to that request, otherwise I would move for approval of his appointment.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the sixteenth, that we approve the mayor's appointments to the Affordable Housing Board. Any discussion? Been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That is the extent of the report of city officials, Mr. President.
We will dispense with line items seven through ten. Alderman from the third, you recognize.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to move to suspend the rules to introduce board bill forty-seven.
Been moved by Alderman from the third, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second, that we suspend our rules for the purposes of introduction of board bill number forty-seven. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Brody.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Kohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed. Alderman Moore. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderman Kennedy. You have twenty-six aye votes, Mr. President.
By vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the third, and introduced, board bill forty-seven. Mr. Clerk, please place board bill forty-seven at the end of our first reading calendar.
So noted.
Thank you, sir.
First, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Forty-One, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, an ordinance to provide for the borrowing of funds in anticipation of the collection of tax payments levied by the city for deposit in its general revenue fund for the calendar year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and remaining uncollected, and uncollected and other revenues remain, remaining to be collected and deposited in the general revenue fund for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. All such revenues for the general revenue fund in the treasury of the city through the issuance by the city of its tax and revenue anticipation notes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Forty-Two, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to four million dollars of excess monies that the city, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Development Fund in accordance with Section five-one-six-B of the Lambert-St. Louis International Airport and Denture of Trust between the city as grantor and U.M. Bank N.A. as trustees, dated as of October fifteenth, nineteen eighty-four, as amended and restated as of July first, two thousand and nine, as amended and supplemented, authorizing a transfer in an amount not to exceed four million dollars from the DSSF into the Airport Development Fund during the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and seventeen, for the purpose of making funds available to address Coldwater Creek emergency repairs, stabilized banks, and channel, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Forty-Three, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport, Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing a first amendment to Section one of the Airfield Building and Environs Project, Ordinance Number seven-zero-six-one-seven, which authorized a multi-year public work and improvement program at St. Louis International Airport, increasing the total estimated cost of the airport building and environs project by four million dollars to nineteen million dollars, and amending exhibit, exhibit E entitled project list by adding a new project to the list entitled Coldwater Creek Emergency Repairs, Stabilized Banks, and Channel, authorizing a first supplemental appropriation in the total amount of four million dollars from the Airport Development Fund into the Airport Building and Environs Projects, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Forty-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, the owner and operator of the St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the Second Amendment to Lease Agreement AL-two-two-two between the city and MHS Travel and Charter. The Second Amendment amends lease agreement AL-two-two-two dated June twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, as amended by the First Amendment to the Lease Agreement AL-two-two-two and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Forty-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the city, owner and operator of St. Louis International Airport, to enter into and execute the Airport Terminal Services, Inc. Space Permit AL-oh-seven-one between the city and Airport Terminal Services, granting to the permitee, subject to, in accordance with the terms, covenants, and conditions of the permit, certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of the premises, which is defined and more fully described in Section two-oh-one of the permit that was approved by the Airport Commission and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Forty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Green, an ordinance renewing the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District pursuant to Section seventy-one point seven-nine-zero Missouri Revised Statute through seven-eight, seven-one-eight-oh-eight Missouri Revised Statutes, setting its boundaries, tax rate, initial rate of levy, subject to the approval of the qualified voters, bonding authority, and uses to which tax revenue may be put, creating a Board of Commissioners and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Forty-seven, sponsored by Alderwoman, Alderman Bosley, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to change thirty-two-hundred block of Sullivan from a one-way passage to a two-way passage and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of the first reading, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk, please assign board bill forty-seven to Streets.
So noted.
And assign board bill thirty-two to Public Safety.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
Ways and Means, board bill number forty-one and forty-six. Transportation and Commerce, board bills forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four. Public Safety, board bill thirty, number thirty-two. Streets, Traffic, and Refuge, board bill number forty-seven.
Second reading.
Board Bill Number Four, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in a ten-foot-wide L-shaped alley in City Block seven-nine-eight as bounded by Shenandoah, Tenth Street, Lamai, and Menard in the city. Board Bill Number Thirty, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Anderson at the north curb line of Dryden and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Thirty-One, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Mardel and Sulphur, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Mardel at Sulphur, and regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Sulphur at Mardel and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Twenty-One, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city a proposal to revise Section two of Article eight of the City Charter, which requires city employees to reside within the boundaries of the city and thus allow said employees, except for city agency and department directors appointed by the mayor, to reside outside of the boundaries of the city, and providing for an election to be held for voting on the proposed revision and the manner of voting thereat, and for the publication, certification, deposit, and recording of this ordinance and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Twenty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Moore, and Alderman Bosley, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city a proposed amendment to the Charter of the city to maintain the Board of Aldermen as a body of twenty-eight Aldermen representing twenty-eight wards and preventing its reduction beginning December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, to a body of fourteen Aldermen representing fourteen wards as called for under Article one, Section three of the City Charter, providing for an election to be held for voting on the proposed amendment and the manner for the voting, and for the publication, certification, deposit, and recording of this ordinance and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a public works and improvement program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport at a total estimated cost of fifteen million dollars, authorizing an initial appropriation in the amount of five million three hundred thou, three hundred thousand and eighty-two, five, five million three hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred and forty, forty-three dollars from the Airport Development Fund and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing a first supplemental appropriation in the total amount of four hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and two dollars from the Airport Development Fund into the Airfield Building and Environs, Ordinance seven-oh-five-seven-oh, approved July tenth, two thousand and seventeen, for the payment of costs authorized therein and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading, Mr. President.
We will dispense with line items fourteen through twenty, first reading resolutions.
Resolution Number Twelve, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Spencer, and Alderman Ogilvy, exploring the effect of ward reduction and development recommendations for an equitable and efficient transition from twenty-eight to fourteen wards through the establishment of an advisory committee.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognized on the first reading of resolution
First reading of resolution number twelve.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I move that we assign resolution number twelve to the legislation committee.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, Mr. Clerk, excuse me, please assign resolution number twelve to legislation.
So noted.
And we'll dispense with line item twenty-two, missing is unfinished business.
We have none, Mr. President.
Announcements.
On Friday, May eleventh, the Board of Aldermen will meet at ten a.m. in the chambers.
Any further announcements?
No, we have no further announcements.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Mr. President, members of the board, especially the legislative committee.
Let's have some order, please proceed.
We're going to have a legislative meeting, not this Wednesday, but two Wednesdays from now, May the sixteenth, and we're going to listen to resolution number twelve and board bill number thirty-five.
Okay. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, the Ways and Means Committee meeting will start Wednesday, the sixteenth, at nine a.m. start Wednesday, the 16th, at 9:00 a.m. And pretty much after that, we'll be running three weeks, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays after that. So, but first meeting will be this Wednesday, coming up, May 16th, 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 23rd.
Friends, remind me, it's a 6:30 in the evening meeting here at City Hall.
Okay.
So it's Wednesday, the 16th, but it's a 6:30 in the evening.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the 28th.
I would like to invite everyone to the Skinkert de Bolivar neighborhood this weekend. On Sunday, from 1:00 to 5:00, we are hosting Porch Fest. And Porch Fest is a free self-guided musical tour of the neighborhood. There will be 25 bands featured on 13 different porches, and I am hosting one of those, one of those bands on my porch, so everyone is invited. So it's 1:00 to 5:00 in the Skinkert de Bolivar neighborhood. You can check it on Facebook. Hope everyone will join us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. This Sunday, the 6th of May, is the annual St. Ambrose LaFesta, starting at noon until 6:00 on the parish grounds. There'll be rides, there'll be alcohol and gambling. It is a Catholic church, so come on by, thank you very much.
All right, any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to announce that we'll have a Transportation Committee meeting next Thursday, whatever that date is, at, that's the 8th, I believe, at 10:30.
All right, Mr. Clerk, make note of that.
So noted.
Could you please repeat that, Alderman?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Can we please have some order?
Okay.
Please proceed.
So Transportation Committee meeting will be next Thursday at 10:30.
All right.
May I add one more thing very quickly in my announcement?
Yes.
I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I got to say something openly. I am extremely distressed with the crime in our city. We don't have enough policemen, but you can't police your way out of where we are in this city and in this world. We're going to have to really change how we interact with each other. We're going to have to change what happens in our schools. We're going to have to have our churches to come outside of the walls and work and do the mission that's required to get people's hearts and souls right. We're going to have to make sure that we provide opportunities for young people, most especially, to have different dreams, to have different understandings about what life has as far as a future is concerned, and not only rely on the ignorance that they see on TV, in videos, and in print media. We have got to do so many different new things, and we have got to make sure that that's what we are about. All the ignorance that goes on in politics, all the backstabbing, all the needing to cut another human being down and make them be something less than what they are because you don't know them, you're just doing something. We have got to change what we do and how we do it, and I've had enough. So I'm putting everybody on notice. You bring some dumb stuff to me, I'm going to send you back home with it. Thank you.
Oh, amen. Amen to that. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 26th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I just want to make a correction. May 9th, Ways and Means will be meeting, just one board bill, but the following week...
Is when you start?
Yes, when we will start the Ways and Mean Budget Committee meeting.
Okay.
So that's 9:00 a.m., May 9th, that's a Wednesday, if I'm correct. Following week, Wednesday, 16th, then weeks after that, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for the next three weeks. That's it, thank you.
All right, thanks. Alderman from the 1st.
Members of the Board, the Public Employees Meeting will meet following Ways and Means, I guess, at, if he said, did he say 10:00 a.m.? 9? We'll meet at 10:00 a.m. And is that Wednesday?
Mr. Clerk.
Wednesday. And also, we're going to invite Mr. Richard Franks of Personnel to be there to speak to us, because we're going through an examination of all the departments in the community, in the city, and also we're looking at civil service and personnel and doing, and trying to educate people who have not been exposed to that. So besides the members, any, all people are invited to hear. We also, for the members, we have a booklet with the list of all of what everybody makes in the city of St. Louis. We've put them in binders, and your secretaries, I'm going to give them to them so that they can tab them, and they'll be prepared for you. And other members, if you want them, you can get them. Also, I want to know who's having the Cinco de Mayo party? Is it the Alderwoman from the 20th that's hosting that? She's not here, so the Alderman from the 9th is hosting it.
Alderman from the 3rd.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody, didn't get to say that last time. I want to follow up real quick on what Ms. Alderman Davis said, Alderwoman Davis said. There is a lot of violence going on in our city, and one of our issues is we don't communicate with each other, and we don't have things in line to create the necessary emotions that are needed in our city. We need to have a little bit more love, and we have to have a lot more interaction. One thing we are doing on the North Side this summer, on the 25th and the 26th of May this month, we're working on having an event called Father and Son Camping in the Park in Hyde Park, where we're getting all of the young men who have sons and the men who are sons in the neighborhood, and we'll be camping inside of Hyde Park, having some bonding moments, waking up in the morning, we'll be fishing in the lake in Hyde Park, so we just wanted to announce that. And anybody that can help out with any resources, we kind of in a battle right now with parks that are telling us that we can't do that, but we can, we'll figure it out.
We can.
I'm sure we can, but that is one of the things that is necessary. We got to bring ourselves together, start communicating more. So if you all want to come out, anybody want to be involved with that, that will be on the 25th and 26th of May.
All right, absolutely, absolutely. Alderman from the 18th, I hear you have an announcement.
President, thank you, Mr. President. May I introduce some special guests?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce two special guests here today. Ms. Kendra Tatum, who's here to my right, and Mr. Philip Weeks, they're both with Privacy Watch, who are here today to talk to Alderman about surveillance technology and the balance between it and privacy issues. In fact, I told them if they really want to speak to Alderpeople, they should feed the Alderpeople, so they have refreshments across in the Kennedy Room, if anyone is interested, and hopefully you'll find your way there, they're there to discuss that with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to, as my special guest here today.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since Cinco de Mayo was raised, it is this weekend. I do want to take a moment just to educate folks, and, you know, oftentimes, Cinco de Mayo is confused for the Day of Mexican Independence, which it is not. Actually, Cinco de Mayo has a significant history in terms of its support of America and the United States, and that, you know, during slavery and during our Civil War, the French were actually cut off by the Union troops from their cotton supply that was coming from the South. And so the French actually tried to, they were actually quite, you know, debt-ridden at the time, and they tried to go after Mexico for the debt that they owed them, and actually sent troops to Mexico to set up a fort to also counteract the Union troops that were trying to fight the good fight, you know, in the Civil War to end slavery. And so the battle at Puebla, the city of Puebla, in Mexico, was won by the Mexicans to keep the French from supporting the South during the uprising during the Civil War. And so the Mexican, the country of Mexico has actually been a significant contributor to the history of this country, and I do want to recognize them and all of their wonderful citizens that are living here today. And while we might express this as a day for drinking and for, you know, Mexican independence, it's actually Mexico's support of the United States that has brought us to celebrate Cinco de Mayo. So thank you to the country of Mexico and all of its wonderful citizens that have supported progress in this country. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 14th.
Announcement, we have a significant number of Mexican restaurants in the Bevo area, and they have put together a little Cinco de Mayo de Bevo. So if you're looking for some places to come and get, Marisco's El Gato is kind of spearheading this. Come on down to the Bevo and celebrate Cinco de Mayo there with a German twist. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? I don't know what's going on back in the corner, is, they guessed of some, Alderman, Alderman, would you please announce what's going on and announce it?
Oh, yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, these are the other members of Privacy Watch.
Okay, perfect, perfect, all right, all right, welcome. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Aldermen from the 4th, 7th, and 13th be excused for necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second about Alderman from the 10th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Board adjourns until Friday, May 11th, 10:00 a.m.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second about Alderman from the 10th, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand adjourned.